Dambie was intentional that we added, even though it is a Rutland County town. There are some other towns like Rupert and Paulette are all included in our program, even though both of those towns kind of straddle the Rutland Bennington line. But so, so those are the requirements is that is just age and residency. So there's not an income threshold or any sort of like a qualification, you know, of free or reduced lunch or anything like that. There's, there's no form that needs to be filled out to qualify for the program.
So any child in Dambie that wants to participate?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. From birth to five.
Yeah, right. Except for the eight, right? Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? On the select board or any of our, our attendees who are here, if they'd like to ask a question, they should remain through.
I'll make a motion to approve putting Shire kids on the appropriations ballot in the amount of $500.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Paul seconded.
Paul seconded? Great. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote. Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn is yes. All right. Motion carries. You will be on the appropriations ballot from the March, on the March ballot.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming to speak with us.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
You're welcome to say, but.
I've got, I've got kids waiting for me to say something about. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So let's take a look at our agenda now. Shelley, you're on the line and you asked us to move something up because you have a very early morning tomorrow, correct?
That's correct, but you can go ahead and do Baker Brook Road.
You want to stay for that anyway?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. All right. So I had received some calls over the past, oh, I don't know, six weeks or so from people concerned about Baker Brook Road and I think Skip, I think that's one of your concerns.
Yes.
Do you want to speak to us about what, what you see happening?
Yeah, what I see down here is a lot of dump trucks, not talking about Steve and the Corning, that's nothing, but there's a lot of dump trucks using this road as a shortcut, going Timoth or even going towards Four Corners. And I mean, so I'm around here more sometimes during the day and I used to be, so I'm noticing more and more. It's a natural highway for these guys running up and down here. And then going up Scottsville's bad enough, then you hit Baker Brook, that narrows up quite a lot, but when they're coming down through, they're coming way better than the speed limit they're coming down through here. And it kind of concerns me that why couldn't they run the Brook Road or even the town of Timoth is hauling? I mean, I know it's a shortcut to go to SLC or Pike's, but they could run down 142. And it's, I don't know, just a shortcut and then, and they're really speeding down through here.
Is the primary problem the speed or are there other problems as well?
It's just the, the trucks. I mean, there's dump trucks, I mean, one after another, up and down this all day long. And I was out here actually instance, I don't know if you know where I live down here Lynn, but to drop off in the road, there's no gravirels or nothing, ran into my driveway. When Allard came down through here the night I called you, his outside wheels were hanging right over. They're not even touching the ground on the bank right here. And they don't slow down for nothing.
So the speed is your primary issue?
Speed and using it as a shortcut for these, all these dump trucks.
Right. So, so.
They're not working on this road.
So it's the volume and the speed?
Volume and the speed. I had no problem if they were working up here on this road, you know? If they're, somebody's getting a load of firewood or somebody's getting a load of gravel or somebody, you know, doing some construction at their home, that's fine, but they're just using this as a shortcut and they could use, you know, they could use the Brook Road or 140.
Well, I got one good suggestion. I think what we should though, we had a problem on that road ever since I remember. Everybody's complained about trucks, they complained about cars, they complained about speed. And we put signs up for corners, we had speed signs put up. Why don't we just throw the road up and let the Scottsville guys take care of it? We don't have to worry about trucks then.
Throw the road up and do what? I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Let the people in Scottsville take care of the road the way they want it taken care of. That way there won't be no trucks on it and they won't have nothing to worry about.
Oh, so make it, make it a private road?
Yeah. Make it, just throw it up so the town of Dambie ain't got to worry about it and you won't have no trucks on it.
Wow. Interesting suggestion.
Because we always have trouble on that Baker Brook Road. I don't care. I mean, it's, it's a shortcut yet, but it saves a lot of miles, saves a lot on trucks and, and most of that, all that truck was working on Dambie roads on the west side and stuff, so. I, you know, I don't know about you, but I've heard we've had, went through this every year with Scottsville Road.
It is, it is a perennial discussion. It's true. So I, I've, I've also heard that speed's been an issue. You know, I had another caller and, and speed was the issue and, and actually Steve, they did identify your drivers, not particularly you in person, but your drivers of your trucks as, as go excessive speed. And, and also mentioned, you know, other trucks as well as excessive speed. And that was a new complaint. I hadn't heard from that person ever before about the road. I thought that he might be on the call tonight, but I'm not seeing him. Annette, are you still on the call? And if so, do you think that there's more trucks now than before? Or do you think it's the same? Do we have any sense of the volume?
So here's what I have observed this year. There seems to always be a flurry of trucks in the spring and the fall. And there's, there was a, a lot of, there is still a lot of trucking activity. It started up a month or so ago and, you know, it sort of, I wondered if somebody had a job they were doing, but they were different trucks. I saw one that was blue that was covered. I saw Kevin Ruane's. I don't see all the colors and all the trucks because of the foliage, but it, there has been a lot of trucking activity and, and it comes in waves. And I also was very bothered by Steve's Jake brakes. I know that he can do this without the Jake brakes. I call it the farting truck. It's just really annoying and I hear it like way off in the distance too. And I saw for when it started, it seemed like the trucks were going the speed limit, but as, as the, you know, as they're, they're doing more and more of it, I, they were using the Jake brakes more and more at this, this sharp corner. I also did encounter sometime this summer, and I think Lynn, I sent you a picture of it, a teenager who had run his vehicle into a tree. I have a pickup truck picture from last winter, I think. And I've, I've heard what I think are some close calls recently. I was not so aware this year of the speed, however, I, more recently, when they're coming up, they tend to be, when they're full, and I, I wonder if they're overloaded too, because some of them look really heavy. They are, they tend to go more the speed limit. When they're going down and they're empty, that's when they seem to be speeding more. And that would, that would jive with what Skip said. I mean, I've been here more than 30 years and when I first came here, Baker Brook Road was, was barely plowed and passable and, you know, even in mud season, it was impossible practically to get through here. And it's just been improved and proved, improved. And I do think the signs have helped. I do think that people are being more careful at the corner. However, they got bullet holes in them and there's often branches in front of them that have never been trimmed. So that's, that's what I'm experiencing and I, whenever anybody, whenever anybody says anything about the trucks, they always say, I practically had a heart attack meeting one of those trucks. And, you know, it's just shocking to some people that, that those heavy loaded trucks are allowed on such a narrow winding road.
Paul, do you have any thoughts? I know that you were wondering if the volume had increased and, and I'm not sure how to, to get a good, you know, grasp on that. I know that.
It's been intense Lynn, this, this last few months. Skip's right. It's, it's, it's been a lot more than we had, we've had sort of a little quiet spell during the summer and it's really picked up. It'd be nice to know whose jobs they're doing, you know? It's, in a way, even though I'm very, my main concern is the safety issue, if I knew that it was a job that was a short-term job that was going somewhere, that at least helps understand it. But when you have no idea who's doing it and you see trucks of all different colors and it's just, you know, I'm, I'm echoing what Skip's saying. It just is, seems like an unnecessary shortcut for some of the, the folks that are using it.
Just as a, a short observation here, I believe that Allard and Kevin Ruane are trucking to the west side for the town of Dambie, which I think that job is going to be finished up soon if it isn't already finished.
It's been done.
It's finished.
It's been done and one of the complaints with Allard came in after he was no longer hauling. So I, he, I, I don't doubt that earlier in the month it was him when he was, and, and I think you would know it Skip, when he was hauling for Dambie, he was hauling really large stones.
Yes, he was hauling big boulders all south of Hallenford.
Yeah. Really, really large stones.
Yeah, I found one by my mailbox.
Oh, this, this would be as big as a small car.
Well, there was, there was, there was some hauling that was much larger than the usual and it, the truck was so much, so loaded that they were sort of football-sized rocks and it was loaded enough, it was falling off the truck.
Yeah. Well, and he did use some of that size too. So some, some of that, if it was before, like two, two weeks ago, or Shelley, I, you probably know better than I do when that work stopped, maybe a week and a half ago.
Yeah, about a week and a half ago.
Yeah. If it was before then, then it probably was being hauled for the, the, um, the stream bank stabilization that we were, did under a grant with USDA on the west side on Little Village Road.
Yeah, because he went by here with quite a few loads.
Yeah. And he was probably headed to the west side. Yeah.
Right. That's where he was headed for the west side. So I mean, most of them trucks were doing work for the town of Dambie, so I mean, kind of a bum rap if we tried to stop them.
Well, as I was saying, maybe you could just like put out a notice on front porch forum for the folks on Baker Brook Road and Scottsville Road to let us know, because we also, you know, we live here, we drive this road, and so we're the ones that are at more at risk in encountering them. And so if we know that there's a lot of hauling, like when Steve's doing his hauling and I've having someone come visit here, I warn them. I had someone come here on a motorcycle and I said, be really careful, there is a lot of hauling right now. And, you know, when it's this short-term stuff, at least if we have some notice, then we can, we can take our own precautions.
Paul, it's possible, it's possible for us to ask our contractors where they're going to be getting their material, so we would know that, right? Paul still there?
Well, I think a lot of it is seasonal, like, I'm not sure if Middletown still, I don't tell them to go down through there, but that's because, you know, they're hauling winter sand and stuff like that. And that's usually, you know, late summer and the fall, they're making, you know, they're building up their stockpiles. I'm not sure if Middletown, I'd rather than set somebody there and check the trucks. Well, this is a hard call because it is a shortcut. Yes, it'd probably be safer if they went down 140 and, and Route 7 down through either to Wickham's. Not, you know, also if they are speeding down through there, if we can find out who the trucks are and then just give them a warning, say, you know, if you're speeding down through here, you're going to have to go another route. You know, if that's what it is. But not living there, I got my own problems up here in Cory, I will check the trailers coming out to Cory. And so, you know, we usually just go to the Cory and say, look, we got a problem. So I'm wondering if we can go to the regular haulers that could go like Timoth and I'm not even sure about Middletown or I'm not sure about Paulette, how they, where they haul from or how, and maybe go to them and go to their, um, commissioner or foreman and say, if you're going to be hauling down through here, you're going to have to go slow, not, you know, and give them the, the rules and regulations down through there for safety because, and if they don't follow it, make them, make them take the other route, like the Brook Road or 140.
So Paul.
I think we got to find out, we can't blame everybody. We just got to find out who, who the culprits are that are in there, people that have used it.
So Paul, you raised, you raised something else that, that I should mention to folks, which is that I've also had a number of complaints recently about speeding in, in other locations on town too. There's a problem with a, a car speeding and accelerating, going past horses and being very dangerous on the Timoth Road. There's been, you know, complaints of two cars side by side, drag racing down Main Street. So I, I, I'm wondering if, if a, a larger question that we don't have to face is the fact that at 10 hours a week, we really don't have enough of a sheriff's presence to discourage speeding and speeding seems to be on the increase. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
I'm in favor of it, but then we got to prevent the town of it, because I had a call on Dambie Hill Road this past week. They pretty much got hit by a car from California flying up through, they were pulling out of the driveway and they were just, they said they were probably doing at least 40 miles an hour up through there, up through Dambie Hill Road, right there, just above the Calvin Hill turn. And they requested to put a hidden driveway or slow down and I'm like, we can put signs up every 10 feet and these idiots that won't slow down are not going to slow down and all we're going to do is just take our roadside, they're going to be filled up with road signs that some of these people, the, the people that are going at, got to be recommended or need, I, I heard, I didn't see it happen, but I heard they did pick up two on Dambie Hill Road within the last three weeks, the sheriff did give them tickets. But I don't know after a fact, I just heard that they, they had them pulled over and gave them tickets, but, and it's all over town, you know, we've had it on, we just put up the 25 speed signs on Raymond Road, which the lady thanked us for doing it and I said, that's all there are is signs. We can't, we can't make the people stay at 25. And I said, in order to get more coverage with the sheriff, we're going to have to up our hours like Wallingford did and, uh, North Clandon, I think North Clandon's up to 40 hours now and Wallingford's, I want to say they're 20 to 30 hours now. And yeah, it's a big expense, but you know, safety. Safety's first. Safety's our priority as far as keeping our citizens safe. And in order to do that, 10 hours a week down here trying to cover 58 miles of roads, it's not going to happen.
Right.
So this is Annette, have you looked at, into getting one of those speed limit signs? You know, Timoth was using them in the village and they, they blink at you if you go too fast. They've had them in Manchester.
We just, we just had one delivered to the town garage and as soon as we find out what size poster needs, it's going to be, we had a donor that donated a cost of a sign and we're going to put it on South Main Street. That's one of the worst spots right now, north and south. And the donor said that they would buy the sign as long as we put it up. They wanted to stay unanimous, so nobody knew who it was. And it was a big investment, so that, as soon as we find out, tear the box open and see what they recommend. I know the guy that I talked, who said that they require a bigger sign post, the solid one, to support the weight of the solar plus the sign, so I'm hoping within next.
I thought they were on a cart in Timoth.
On a, oh yeah, you can get portable carts, but that's on loan through the sheriff's department and it's at their discretion where they're, where to put it. We've had them, we've had them in town.
How does that compare to the price of paying the sheriff to do patrolling?
Well, the price of this sign, because I, I was the one that got this stat on my own, it wasn't nothing to do with the sign board, because I, I've traveled all around the state and all around the northeast and these signs are popping up everywhere, these digital signs, and they do catch your attention. And this sign there was $4100. And I guess I did, um, we'll see how it works on South Main. The person I asked where they wanted it located, North Main and South, and they said South Main, which I agree totally, are kind of across the long flats. And I'd still like to see another one get put up by the post office or the school, but let's get this one going first, see how it works.
So back to the trucks, I recall that when Hollis Squire was road commissioner in Timoth, that, that we went through the same thing. I don't remember who did it, but someone in, associated with the town contacted Timoth, contacted Middletown Springs and Hollis stops, stopped running trucks on Baker Brook Road. So there's a different road commissioner now, maybe, maybe just have to revisit that. So I'd appreciate anything that you all can do to bring a little more.
Yeah, we can talk to them. Like I said, we got to identify who, you know, the ones that do come down through there to save speed, uh, and, you know, being careful about it. We don't, well, I say that because they're not going by my house, but if they're doing it and it's saving time and money for them, that's fine, but if, if, if the independent haulers or whoever they are, they're just flying down through there so they can see how many loads they can get in during the day, some of the ones that we want to put stop to.
Well, and, and that's, I'm remembering also what you were saying is that we did talk to them, Paul, actually you talked with them and, and they, I think Timoth and Middletown both said, yeah, we'll go around. So it may just be that they'd be willing to go around again, we just need to be asked again. And that would reduce, that would reduce some of the traffic. And then the other thing is I see in the chat, we have a little chat thing here and I see that Chris asked if all these trucks were permitted. And of course, we don't know if, we don't know who they are, you know, the ones that have been mentioned, Dan and Pat and Ruane, they, they, they're permitted. But it's true, we may have some trucks that, that are running the road that, that aren't permitted. But, you know, maybe the best way to find out who's speeding and whatever, is time with the sheriff and to get tickets.
And also I, I did at one point put up a game camera, but I'm not very good at using game cameras and I, it just didn't really work. If I could get a decent game camera, I could, you know, and I could probably get pictures of the vehicles. I mean, the pictures that I did get, I was more interested in looking for close calls and seeing how people were coming around that corner. And I got a lot of vehicles just coming around the middle, not staying to one side, but I, that was not specifically about, you know, this spell of trucking that we're having. So I, I'd be willing to do that again if there's a spell of a lot of trucking.
Well, I would, I would recommend if anybody, well, Skip, you're on, like you said, you're on the road and Annette, you're on there. And we got to, you know, we just can't say, well, I think it was Middletown or I think it was Allard. Just get the truck names or find out who they are and get them back to us and I'll call them. I mean.
Skip, can you do that?
We have complaints. I don't want to have just, oh, it's a real truck and they just flew by. You know.
Cause I only, I only see them when I'm like walking up by the road. I, I really can't see the vehicles.
But Skip, you can see them from your house, can't you?
I can, I know who all of them are.
All right.
And Kevin's running this road. He, he's been running it all summer long and not just doing the west side job. Allard runs this road non-stop. The Enkory's truck runs this road. Davenport's truck runs this road. And but, you know, the best, town of Timoth is the only town I see running it and they actually go pretty decent down through here. I mean, but, and I really question if Kevin's truck is really legal, because he goes this way to go to Dorset. So I mean, I don't want to start to get, open a can of worms or nothing, but that truck's not legal all the time running this road. And I see him down in Dorset and he runs this road, goes out, goes down the mountain road or goes to Parrishell, I don't know which way, but I see him in Dorset loaded, same SLC material. So, but that's the major ones right there. There is a couple of tractor trailers been running up down this road. I think it's just somebody moving in, uh, the house was sold up by Candy and Gary Browns. I'm pretty sure that's where that truck is going.
But I did, did you see the one with, Skip, there was a.
We had to stop the guy that was building log cabin up on, by the craft farm, because his GPS was running him up Dambie Mountain Road and he had a 50-foot tractor trailer loaded with logs for that log cabin. And finally, the second and third load, the road crew was out there and they stopped them. And they told them they had to use the Brook Road and he said, well, my GPS is taking me that way. And that does, your GPS, that's what I'm on the process of getting, I don't know if it'll do any good. As I've been noticing around, even in New Hampshire now, is, Vermont has them, not many, but they'll say, this is not a GPS road. But whether they pay attention to it or not, because if I, if I punch in, I want to go to Glenn's Falls, it'll take me up the Brook Road. It takes me right up Dambie Hill Road. And the other morning I, I pretty much got wiped out right on where Calvin Hill comes up through by their candy truck, that pine stick, uh, candy truck. And they said that that truck uses it every day or every time they deliver. And he was flying down through there. I bellied loud enough so the neighbors down the road heard me. And so they're using it all the time. So I've ordered through just right now, Dambie Hill, because there's a lot of people that are blocking the road now and I've had two different complaints, people blocking that the cars flying down through there, is to try to keep military trucks, uh, from using that as a GPS road. And also get that GPS, it's a little orange sign, probably maybe a foot by a foot. And Allard says, this is not a GPS road. And maybe, maybe they'll stop a few cars or trucks or whatever, just, but they are using it for street traffic. And Baker Brook's the same way, because I tried that coming from, and I punched in Dambie Village, the fastest lady puts you down Baker Brook, the slowest lady puts you down the Brook Road.
Yeah. Can, can, can there be a sign that, that, you know, I'm just saying, you know, another, up in the notch this week, a tractor trailer got stuck. It took them hours to get it out because it had done, it had done that. And can that sign that says not GPS, can it also say, you know, warning danger, not a GPS, you know, route, you know, and say something about, you know, truck size?
There's 11 signs before you enter the notch road that tell you not to use the tractor trailers?
No.
They just got one stuck yesterday.
I know.
All these people, half of the, I, I, I run into this problem up here, coming up the dead end road and then they got to back down I road because there's no place to turn around. Uh, first we had it with, the signs were in English when Mike Blair was there and that kind of slowed them down. And then we went to the Canadian drivers, so we had French signs put up. Well, now the ones that I've been stopping, coming up through, they're all Spanish speaking and they just, the first thing they do is say GPS, GPS. So they're following their GPS and they can't read the English or the, uh, French. So what do we got to do? We got to put up a Spanish sign? You know, it's, the GPS is going to get us in a whole bunch of trouble here.
I know, but there's no way to get that turned off, I would think. Haven't we looked into that before?
Yeah. Well, you can push up to the slowest route or the fastest route or the one with no toll.
Right.
And that's, that's it. And I've talked with Keith at the Cory and basically we both agreed is you can't take stupid. So that's, you know, we just deal with that. We try to stop them before they go a half mile up the road and then have to back down, take a chance on crashing into somebody. So I, we can, we can, or I can speak to the ones that you got, Skip. You just, if you will, I mean, my memory ain't that good. If you just text me the ones that. You just, if you will, I mean, my memory ain't that good. If you just text me the ones that you see there, uh, we can go, I can go have a chat with them. Just tell them, you know, just, you know, if you don't, don't slow down and stuff, uh, we're gonna end up boot you off the road. I don't know if it's legal, but I can tell them that anyway.
We can boot them off the road. We can make that note through, through traffic for trucks. So I think going to talk to them would be a good idea. Um, and I wrote down the names, um, and I think Chris probably caught them too.
Um, can I ask, can I ask Skip a question? Did, did you see the one recently, it was, I think, a red truck. It was going from west to east, and it was hauling a trailer that had a backhoe on it?
That's Allard's little truck, I think, ain't it?
It could have, I, I don't know the name, but, you know, i- i- in addition to being a bit, a pickup or a haul truck, it also was using a trailer and hauling equipment on it. And it, it was going fast. That one was speeding.
Well, I think we've got a plan. We've got the, a plan that, that Paul's gonna contact the people that we know, and that would definitely include Allard. Um, and then the other thing, I think we should continue the conversation as a select board. We, you know, we're gonna be setting some appointments to be starting to work on our budget building for next year. And I think that, you know, invite people to weigh in and join the conversation because with the amount of speeding that I'm seeing all over town and the complaints that we're getting, I, I think it's worth visiting as to whether or not we need, you know, we need to try it for a year to get, you know, more time from the sheriff and, and have that sheriff actually writing tickets and see if we can nip this in the bud. We have a lot of new people that have moved into town, and, and as you say, some of these people that we're, are seeing speeding are out of state plates. Um, and if they're gonna be here year-round, you know, we, we might need to get them to understand that we're serious about this. Um, especially, you know, some of these people are, are doing this speeding on dirt roads, and I don't think they have a clue what happens if they lose it on a, on a gravel road. They just haven't had that driving experience.
Wait till it snows.
Yeah. That'll be interesting too. Alright, well, so I think we'll continue talking about the sheriff, and we may or may not build that into the budget. That'll depend on, on, you know, what people think, but it's good to have the conversation now and to record it in the minutes, and it'll be recorded on, on our website. So if people hear this and they want to weigh in on a sheriff or not a sheriff and the cost, they can do that. And so we'll continue that discussion. And in the meantime, Paul, you'll make some calls to those companies that were, um, mentioned, um, and the Town of Timoth that were mentioned by Skip.
Okay.
And I want to see the sheriff sitting in the village for at least an hour a week. I don't care if he breaks it up into three fifteen-minute slots or how he wants to do it. But coming up Borough Hill, exactly what I told you was gonna happen has happened. They see the new tar, they hit the accelerator, and they're going over fifty miles an hour. So he needs to sit in one place for more than three minutes, like he's been doing. Ten hours is a lot of time. I don't think one hour devoted to the village is too much to ask.
Let's just remember, Brad, that the ten hours also includes domestic complaints, robberies.
I understand all of that, Lynn, but we don't have that many domestic complaints and everything else.
The last time.
And I said he could, I said he can break it up.
Yeah. So, but I think you're just, actually, you're making my case and my point that I think we need the sheriff for more hours. I agreed to try to get him there and, and also on the east road where this car is terrorizing people. Um, you know, now, because those are our immediate problems. But I do think that we, as a board, should consider seriously whether or not we need to increase the amount of time. Because we do have the domestics, we do have the thefts, we do have the other issues. And, and then we also have, as I think Paul said, fifty-eight miles a road. Oh. Alright, well, thank you, Skip, for joining, and Annette for, um, giving us that information. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Um, so next up, Shelley, you're still with us?
Yep, I am. I had to call back in.
Yeah, you must be falling, falling asleep, so, because I know you've had a long day. Um, but the next thing we discussed was facial covering expectations for town, um, appointees. Um, and, um, this is because it's, uh, come to my attention that the, um, some of the town appointees, although I think that, um, so it came to my attention because of the planning commission, and so Shelley's here to talk with us and, and have that discussion. But I do think that, that, um, you know, this should apply for any appointees that we have. And sorry, that's my telephone ringing. Uh, and I can hang up on them. Wasn't very nice, and was it? Um, there, all gone. Um, um, so anyways, the, the issue is, um, and Shelley and I talked earlier today about it. The, the issue is that the planning commission has been using the town office for their meetings. Um, and just as we discussed when we were having the issue with, um, Brad unable to wear a mask there, um, you know, we have an obligation as a select board to protect our employees, and having people coming into that meeting space without a mask is problematic. We certainly understand that not everybody can wear a mask, but there are ways for people to conduct meetings like we are tonight um, without, um, needing to, um, have people who are more exposed because they can't wear a mask, and so they're not as protected, then potentially go into a public space where they have the potential to, if they have the virus, to spread the virus. Um, and remembering that forty percent of the people, forty percent of the spread of the virus comes from people who have no clue they're sick because they don't have any symptoms at all. They don't have a fever, they don't have a cough, they don't have anything, but they're, they're shedding virus. Um, and so it's our obligation to protect our employees, so we need to figure out what, what we can do. And so Shelley and I talked around some, a few ideas. And I don't know, Shelley, have you had a chance to think anymore about it since we talked?
I have. I think, um, I think the select board should take the step to make all meetings for anybody in the Town of Danby to be virtual until the mask mandate is lifted.
That's an option.
And I will reiterate what I said to you. I was not aware of the capacity of the room, mask or no mask. Um, I was aware of the six feet, um, you know, six feet social distancing, which is what we were doing, plus some. But now you tell me that three people in the room is too many. So, I mean, the only way around it, since I cannot comfortably wear a mask due to a medical condition, Hilda cannot comfortably wear a mask due to a medical condition. So, and Bob does not, and Bob is concerned about his health or being a carrier. And I think we should just nix it. Not that we're meeting again until January, but, um, I think we should just do everything virtually from this point on.
Do you have the, um, do you have the capacity to set up Zoom meetings or, or something like this where people can call in?
Well, Bob has from the past. Um, he is the secretary and he is one with the technical knowledge. But if we have to learn how to do it, you know, somebody else, we can do that.
Yeah. Well, Bob can do it, and, and, and there are lots of different ways to do it, and, and we could definitely, you know, make sure that that happens.
Uh, Greg actually did it. Bob didn't dial in at the meeting, so he wasn't at our last meeting. He was not, um, administrating, you know, the dial-in stuff. But, um, Greg was able to do it on his iPad.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sometimes for our select board meetings, often Bob does it for us. But, um, but there's times when I have, we have to have meetings in, in the middle of the, um, month or something, a special meeting. And then I usually, you know, I, I do it through another, uh, um, Bob does it through GoToMeetings, I think, and I do it through Teams.
He does.
When there's Zoom. There's all kinds of ways to do it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we have until January to figure it out.
Uh, that's true. That's true. If your next meeting's January, you've got until January to figure it out. So, um, but you don't want to just say that you're gonna conduct your meetings that way and make it your choice. You, you would prefer that to be.
No.
We tell you.
I would prefer, since, since this all came to the select board, I would prefer the select board to say, look, you're our appointed officials, planning commission, this is what we want you to do, townwide. Anybody who's having a meeting.
How do, uh, how do other people on the select board feel about that?
I'm good with it. After the group meeting, I don't, I don't have a problem with the phone. I mean, the first couple of phone calls, when we started this thing back in March or whatever, were kind of confusing because nobody knew what was going on. But since then, I've had my doctor's appointments. I've had, uh, other appointments that have been over the phone. And it's great. I don't have, we have, I don't have to, guys have anything for a doctor's appointment or, uh, stuff like that. And these meetings here are great, uh, especially, you know, with what we're having to deal with and everybody. So it just keeps us, like I say, I go back to the safety thing. I don't know, because I'm getting older a lot. I don't care if it's in the car or, uh, um, health or anything, is whatever we do to keep ourselves safe, um, I'm, I'm for it.
Right. And I, I think to clarify, I think we, what we would be saying is that, that in any meetings being conducted by people who are appointees of the select board, um, I'm just thinking. Library, we don't have any control over that, although we do have an order in place that requires masks, and the governor requires masks. Um, and they should be abiding by those. And if they're not, you know, but, um, but I, I.
But, but again, it goes back to the mandate, um, that states very clearly, if you have a health condition, you are not required to wear a mask.
It's, it's true, Shelley, that it says that you're not required to wear a mask if you have a health condition, but it also says if you can find another way. It says to work, work remotely if you possibly can so that you're not at risk of infecting other people. And in this case, there's a reason that people can't work remotely and set up the remote.
I completely understand that. What I'm trying to tell you is people are going to interpret it as I and other people have. So if you, uh, go ahead and make the motion and say it's all gonna be virtual, there's no discussion. It's not open to interpretation.
Would anybody like to make a motion that, that, um, uh, meetings of, of select board appointees be held virtually until, um, uh, such a time as the mask mandate is lifted?
I'll make the motion.
There's Doug. Anybody like to second?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, let me get back to my list. Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn? Yes. Alright. Very good. Thank you, Shelley, for your suggestion and for coming to talk about it.
You're welcome. Did you want to discuss the attendance policy and what I heard from Ed Boe?
I'd love to. Thank you for reminding.
Alright, no problem. So I talked to Ed Boe via email a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, right after, right after you tasked me with it. And, um, he said there's nothing in statute that prevents a town from making a policy that, over attendance on their appointed members. And that being said, the only thing I have to say about it is I would encourage it for all appointed members, regardless of their position.
Yep. Alright. So that's probably something we should, um, give a little bit more thought to and maybe put on agenda for another meeting to go more into depth on. Does that sound like a good idea?
Well, you might actually have a list to look at your appointed positions, not necessary personnel, but your appointed positions. So you have a good idea.
Right.
Who all you're, um, affecting.
Who it affects and, and who we have to, um, communicate with. Yep.
Right.
Alright, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome. And if that's all you have, I'm off.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Shelley.
You're welcome. Bye.
Alright.
Alright, so next up on our list is our Nemrick license agreement, which I could not find a copy of it. Um, but let me see. I didn't check email. Um, let me check right now. Maybe I did send off a note to Janice, and she might have sent it. I also sent one to Doug. Let's see if anything came in. Aha, Janice is on the ball. Uh, nope, we're slated, we're, uh, you must have it, your folder is empty. That's where it was. Ooh, dang. Um, so it was a physical folder. Um, I haven't been down, um, and I didn't, darn it. Um, hmm. Well, that creates a problem because, um, because I don't have it, and I don't remember picking it up out of my folder. So there must be a miscommunication somewhere. Um, has anybody else seen it?
No, nope.
Well, I'll tell you what. I would suggest then that we, um, just sort of t- table that item for now. Um, I suspect that we may need to have a special meeting anyway, since we have the, a, a union issue that we might be discussing soon, and, um, a negotiation issue. And if that's true, um, maybe if we're gonna have a special meeting anyway, we can, you know, um, put that on the agenda and deal with that, um, at that time. Um, I don't know how time sensitive this is, but without having it to look at, it's, uh, it's not really something we can discuss. Does that sound right?
So do. Yep.
Alright. And may feel differently. If not, we'll move on to reviewing salt bids. Um, so there were salt bids in your, what I sent you. Um, I think we had, um, American and Appalachia. Right? I think there were two, is that right?
Three.
Three. Okay, so there's Appalachia. Well, Appalachia sent two letters. One was sort of a cover letter, and one actually had the price in it. So Appalachia's price was sixty-four dollars a ton. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Um, and then I was confused about Americans. Now let me find it here. Um.
They were up around seventy.
Well, somebody was up around seventy. That was Cargill, I think. Um, give me a minute. I just have to find, um.
Cargill, seventy dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yeah, Cargill was the seventy. Um, and then, then there was, um, then there was another one that said it was, it listed both sixty-eight and sixty-four, and I was confused. Anybody catch that? I can find it. Give me just a minute. Uh, here we go. Um, so it's American rock salt. American rock salt received this year's salt contract for District One. So this is the letter from Christopher Taft, and it says that, um, that the price for D1 municipalities will be sixty-eight, sixty a ton. Now, maybe we're not a D1 municipality because I think we also got something from American, um, that, um, says, uh, delivered price per ton of sixty-four dollars a ton. So I'm not sure quite which one it is. Did anybody else catch that difference?
No.
Yeah, sixty-four dollars a ton, it says.
Yeah. So you see that where it's up top, right, on the American one in that square box on the top?
Then we had one from Morton too, didn't we?
You know, I'm, do we, um.
I think that was the first one we got, like, almost two weeks ago.
Um, let me look in my inbox and see. Can, if anybody can find it, um, please look. I'll take a look right now. Um. So that would be Morton. Let me see. Um, I'm not seeing anything recently from that. Um, let me see if I can check my emails from Janice. One of the challenges I have with my emails from Janice is she often doesn't put a subject on them, so it's sometimes hard to do a search. Let's see. Um, Janice, um, let's do an advanced search. Item contains Morton. I'm not, I'm not coming up with anything. Does anybody else found anything in their emails?
Hmm, no, not yet.
Alright, let me keep looking. I'm glad you all remembered it. I had forgotten that one entirely. Um.
Okay, wait a minute. Found it. Morton. Okay, wait a minute. Found it. Morton. Their was seventy-one eleven.
Wow. Well, that knocks them out, doesn't it? Okay. Alright, good. Thank you, Doug, for finding that. That's great. So it sounds like we've got Appalachia at sixty-four and American, it seems to be at sixty-four too, although it's odd that the note from Chris Taft said sixty-eight, sixty. Now, they said that was for a certain class of municipality. Maybe we're in a different class. I don't know. We could, and I don't know, have we ever done, who, who have we done business with before? Is there anybody who has history on, on what, you know, what, what the history is with vendors and reliability?
Usually what we did was, we left, we usually kept two and sometimes three. One of them had a minimum requirement of one load, or so many tons, to keep them in the contract. But sometimes when there's a shortage of salt, then we, we'd have a second or third one we could rely on. And I'm trying to think of-
So-
... delivering on the town meeting day, because I talked to that driver and told him not to bring a second hold, because we're right in the middle of elections for the town meeting. And he said, well, when you call, we're usually here within an hour or two, because they, they run, I believe, Lynn Falls or Albany. And I'm not sure if that was American or what, but they, like I said, keeping at least two, possibly a third one, as long as we don't have to have a minimum. One of them, he didn't have to buy at least so many tons.
So American, twenty-two ton minimum for American. I'm seeing that on the, the second bullet on their thing. It says, delivered pricing is- full truckload quantity for delivery, normally thirty to thirty-five tons per truckload, twenty-two ton minimum, and/or weight dependent on local regulations.
Yeah.
So it's a minimum, is that a minimum then per, per truck that they're saying? Yeah. Normal delivery is three to five working days after receipt of order and is subject to availability. So that's what, that's what American says. I'm trying to read Cargill's.
I can't remember on the end of, that they, could probably check, double check with Dougie, he could probably whip that right up, but they were the ones that were, I think, delivering the most frequent to us. Like I said, I think it's a good idea to keep at least two. And, because I know one year way back, there was a problem even getting salt. Depends on how bad the winter is. And the state was, so I would say we keep a couple at least, and keep one or the minimum-
You want be both American and Appalachia, since they're both sixty-four dollars a ton?
Yes. Because that's where it says, subject to availability. So that's why we need at least two.
Yep.
And another question is, is that winter salt, when it gets real, real cold, we have to buy the bedded salt then? Yeah. When it gets down way, Harold, this regular salt don't work.
So let me just read you. Appalachia says in their note, it says, "We do not require any signed contracts for minimum amounts or maximum amounts. Order what you need, when you need it. Our customers are never shut off. Have chunky salt, do semi or totally untarped piles." They also sent a picture, I think they're the ones that sent a picture of-
Yeah, they have a new salt shed.
Yeah, they're, they have three giant salt buildings.
Right.
Yeah. So would anybody like to make a motion to go with American and Appalachia?
Some moved.
Brad made a motion, and I think I heard Doug, you seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not hearing. Oh, sorry. Is there further discussion? Did I cut somebody off? Okay. So we'll vote. Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. Alright. Um, so we've got the salt bids. Let me, give me just a minute to get back to my, I've got so many screens going here, I can't, I can't see it. There we are. I can, I can tell who's here now. Alright. Um, so next on our list is our Road Commissioners Report. You're up, Paul.
Uh, I'm just gonna run briefly through this. Our, the people that have been down through, see that our pavement is done for the year. Tom, powder sand and gravel there, they did our parking lot, which took the hump off of our parking lot, which I didn't think that they will do that. Figured they'd be led in there. And actually, it's a nice entrance in there now, so when them tractor trailers, when they do come in to deliver salt, they don't have to worry about getting dragged in on there. And hopefully, we've got a couple more feet. They did widen out the entrance way and they got, so Penneth Road's complete. They did, actually, right from the first bridge in Fishville up to the second bridge, which I didn't think, I thought they were just gonna patch it by paying the bill early and excess money that came from Bambi Penneth Road. And we had enough to get that done, so that should last probably six to eight years up through there. And then they just skimcoated a few bad spots down there above the town office and patched a couple of places. All the Fishville Bridge, they hated it. And so our pavement's done for the year. And on Al, Eddie Willis down to the High Bridge. I never thought they'd get all these done. I didn't think we had enough money in there, but we did, so the, the side road's actually looking pretty good. The project on Bambi Hill, I believe that's a two-part project. They used up everything they could on material down as far as the bottom of Bond Hill. And we gotta put three culverts in up through there. And I think that'll be in the second part. Hopefully, we'll have enough time to get it done before winter. And the project on Dambie Mountain Road, I believe is complete. Over by Davey's Camp, with the ditches and the culverts that they've replaced. And I believe they're changing the culverts now that- Nemec Collins Farm there, there's two of them. One of them was exposed. And then, that's where they were headed, to get that done. That was next on the list. And... Oh, as I mentioned briefly, the speed sign has come in. I got called, said there's a box down there with my name on it. I thought they put the town in Bambi, but, so they got it in undercover. And as soon as we get the box and we find out what size post we need, we'll get that in place. And then I'm gonna need somebody that can program it, because the guy said it's easy to program, but you can do it from a, a phone. And you program in your speed and all of the other stuff. He said it's easy to set up, but that may be for somebody who knows what they're doing, not me. Or you get somebody that's computer savvy or something like that and help us set that up. Hopefully, that'll help a little bit on speeding in town. And I believe Lynn, you're gonna get into the Parker Road and-
Yeah, I can do that one. Sure. Parker Road, what I can report is that, that we're, we're done, but maybe not quite. The temporary bridge is out, the materials are gone, the, the cement blocks have been removed and are put up in the gravel pit and marked FEMA. But the, there is a question. Josh Caravel, who is the, as the person Charlie said, was the fishy guy, he came to sign off on it. And he said that there is gravel that was spread on top of the soil, and the soil was supposed to be left as native soil. And I understand why our contractor did that. It was very wet, and I think he thought that there was gonna be a lot of erosion if he didn't do that. And he's probably right about that. But Josh is just not sure whether or not the wetlands, it actually is the wetlands people who were insisting on that. And so he has written a letter to them. He CC'd me on it, I've seen the email, asking them to weigh in on, is that gonna be acceptable, or do we have to remove the gravel? Do we have to mix some topsoil with it or whatever? I've spoken to Dan, our contractor on that, that was Dan Allard, and, and he has said that he will make it right, whatever needs to be done. But until we get that final word from the wetlands and get that finished, Parker Road's not quite officially done. We do have a time limit on it, because we've got to get it done in order to get all the paperwork and everything in by November 3rd, I think, which is our deadline with FEMA. So hopefully, I will hear from Josh today, or tomorrow. I did not hear from him today, but I did send off an email asking him for an update and reminding him that the clock's ticking. So, and other than that, it's a beautiful bridge. Go see that bridge. Holy smokes. It's gorgeous. And then the other thing, though, I can report is that we are not going to be putting back in a dry hydrant there. You know, the dry hydrant was taken out during that same flooding event. FEMA was prepared to pay for it, but they have made a determination, they, meaning Ken Abbott, our fire chief, and, and I think the company that builds the dry hydrants, that that location is no longer an appropriate location because of clay or silt or something. And FEMA will not spend the money to put it in another location, because this was to make us, to return us to where we were before the storm event. So, so I guess we just won't have a dry hydrant on that stretch of road. And, let's see, the other one I can update is on Little Village Road, so that work is complete. And Josh from the Fisheries and Michael Lapointe from USDA, and it was a grant money through USDA, both of them have signed off saying that that job is complete. One thing we might want to do, I know that, I, it might have even already happened, I think Larry and Lori were on top of moving some cement blocks up there, because it is, it is quite a pitch off into that stream now. And it's a steep wall that you would go down if you went off the road. So we were gonna put some cement blocks there as a temporary. But Paul, you and I had discussed the possibility of taking out about four trees that we do have permission to take out from the Bat people, where it's okay if we want to cut those trees. And if we're going to cut them, we should cut them this winter, or, or this fall. But we talked about taking out those trees and potentially scooting the road over a little bit, just so that there's a little bit more room. And eventually, I think we'd like to try to get a guardrail in there. But, but in the meantime, at least we've got some blocks for some safety. Did you want to add-
Yeah, all they said, they, yeah, they said that in order to drive the guide rails in, that you have to come in, I'm not sure, three or four feet, I guess-
Yeah.
-from where they tried putting the post in. That's why we're putting our temporary blocks, and scoot that road over just a little bit, so they can drive the guide rails in. And, and once, once we get that done, just widen that section out a little bit, and then we can put in whatever we need there, a couple hundred feet of guide rails, because that is a, it's a, it's a drop. I mean, there's no protection or nothing. So at least two or three blocks that they're gonna, they were gonna put them in, because when I talked to them before I left, that they said that they were gonna get them, plus the two or three over at the bottom of Willie Hill on that bridge number three corner where the guide rail was taken out, or bad. And they were gonna put a couple of them blocks on there to, in case somebody comes down, they, they wouldn't come over the bank there. So I haven't been over there since, so I don't know if they did that.
Yeah, I don't know either, but you're right. That's an important spot, too.
Yep.
Yeah. So anyway, the good news is we got those projects done, and they're off our plate. We've just got the last minute paperwork to do so that we could get fully reimbursed. And, and that's, that's a good thing. We have not paid Dan Allard for his work on Parker Road yet, because it's not complete. But, but as soon as we get word, he said he will take care of it, and I'm sure it'll be done. So. Um, the other thing is that I met last week, I think it was last week, with, I don't know, Paul, it was the same day you and I met. But I, I met with Julie- Yeah, whatever day that was. Last Friday?
Uh, Thursday.
Last Thursday. So I, I met with Hillary from the Meadowway Water Conservation, and I met with, she had, actually, she had a couple of other people from Bennington who wanted to learn from what we were doing there. And, and then Julie from FEMA, who's federal FEMA. So she's Fish and Wildlife, she's, she's, yeah, she's Fish and Wildlife, but she's federal, she's not state. And what they were looking at is the big culvert on Green Hill, the one that is still about three feet above the water. And FEMA is, that's sort of moved to a higher priority on their list. And they think they can get us some money to do the design phase of that, to design something that would both, they're interested in stream connectivity. And we took a walk both up and downstream to see if there were other natural barriers that would make it not worth doing. The stream is actually a very well-connected stream, and they're very interested in doing it, allowing the fish to move up and down that streamway. So they want to do it for the fish. And then the other thing is that incorporated in that would be some things that would reduce the amount of gravel runoff that's, you know, coming down off Green Hill and getting into that stream and ending up in Pollitt, as we all know, when we see the giant pile of gravel, in Pollitt. It's Dambi gravel. So they are looking into putting together a couple of things that would, because FEMA requires a match for their grant to do the design work, but Hillary thinks she can come up with some money that can be the, the match. So, so we're working on that, and maybe, you know, maybe we'll find some, some money to do that. The other thing we saw that day, Paul, you might, you want to mention the culvert we saw that with Tom that day?
Yeah. The, I'm not, I'm not sure what his last name is, but Tom, just before he gets to the end of our road on Little Village, he sent me a picture and a pole number. There was a rotted elk culvert that was letting water go by that culvert into the next culvert down, which I didn't even know was there, because it was covered up with so much brush. And until he came out, when Lynn and I were there to show us, oh no, Letta and I went in to check his driveway to see where the water was running, we see the second culvert below it. And I don't know how many tandem loads of sand. It's unbelievable how much sand and gravel came down through that big culvert. It looked like possibly a twenty-four inch culvert. And this guy was hauling the sand, he made a burn. And I'm, I'm saying just the sand that was there, I didn't count what he'd hauled away. And I don't know, he said he's been doing it for years.
Yeah.
And there was at least, I'd say, two or four tandem truckloads-
Yeah.
-of sand and gravel there. And he built his own burn to try to stop it from washing across his lawn down into his pond. And I said, Steve, if you had this problem, you should have called us. And I didn't realize there was that much of a problem. And you can't see it from the road. It's only from when you start to drag in. So, and when Hillary was there, I had to leave. And Lynn continued with Hillary. So hopefully, once you see how much that gravel was washing into the same stream that runs into the Green Hill stream, so we're hoping they'll take that into the project also. And we can replace, do them ditches and-
Yeah. That won't be FEMA that will do that, but, but that might be the, the, oh, the, the better, the Better Roads Grants, the ones, the, the same ones that did the, that are doing the ditching and the work, you know, a- that are doing the ditching and the work, you know, a- along the, um, you know, like on Staples Road and Jim Town Road and, you know, the Rock. It's that same grant that might do that. I was a little disappointed after you left. Um, I did go back to that spot with Hillary, Paul, and Hillary said that that was, that was the spot she wanted to talk to me about, she had been aware of it. Um, interestingly enough, she had done tests to the water quality in the river, um, before, after, um, Tom had dug that swale to, and berm to capture it. And the berm actually improved the water quality in a significant way. So, so we've got a lot of data that says that it's really important. Um, she did say that the new person handling those grants at the Planning Commission is Devin. And, um, and so I wrote an email to Devin this week asking him, you know, where we stand on those grants and he got back to me today and I'll share that with you all tomorrow, I'll send it out to everybody. Um, it, it was, um, it gave me some information, but still left some information to, to, to be found out, so. Um, but anyway, yes, if we can get a grant to do that, um, I think that that works. And then also, I think we need to check to see, Paul, where that road is on our priority list for that. You know how we have to do all those roads by 2000, um, I don't know, it was in the next... Yeah, we should see where that is on the priority list because, um, that would help us get funding for it.
Okay.
So... Um, anything else on roads?
No, I'm, I wore out.
You wore out?
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing else on roads, nothing else on culverts, nothing else on, on, uh, sometimes I think it's all we talk about, it's roads and culverts and speeding. So let's see, um, Brad, you had something you wanted to add.
Right.
Designating proceeds from the town hall, do you wanna talk to us about what you have in mind?
Sure, I'll make a motion to designate the proceeds from the town hall sale to improvements on the town garage.
Uh, let's hear a second so we can discuss.
I'll second it.
All right, Steve, second. Up for discussion.
So I'm doing this because obviously there's a lot that needs to be done there. We've talked about it before and I just don't wanna see the $30,500 disappear into the general fund and, uh, get nibbled away at when we have a lot of things that need to be done at the town garage.
Well, um, I think that's a good point and, and we don't want it to just, just get nibbled away at. Um, it would be nice to save it for a capital project and that certainly is our, a, a, a very important capital project. Um, the only thought I have is that, um, and I, I totally agree, we need to do something with the garage. Um, I can give an update, I managed to catch up with Dan today. Um, and, you know, Dan was looking into, remember when we met and we talked, we were talking about, oh, the issue of building a new garage and not building
Right.
and all of that. Dan was going to get hold of Chip and they were going to give us some information that we thought was gonna be new information. In fact, Dan learned the same thing that we already knew from all the work that Bob did, which was that, um, um, you know, that Rupert's costs, you know, 600,000 and, you know, basically, basically the prices are in the, you know, the 600 to, you know, the, the half a million to 700,000 range. The kind of things that make a difference are like whether you have radiant heating in the floor or you have infrared heat in the ceiling, um, one's a lot cheaper than the other. But essentially, um, you know, it, it's probably a $600,000 project to build a new town, um, garage, um, which he recommends that we do and he points out that money is very cheap to borrow right now and, and that might be something that we want to consider, um, especially if we can move the dump and, uh, and the, the transfer station and join in with Mount Tabor on that, that would then give us room and to make it worthwhile to probably put in a, a new building there, um, if we can borrow the money inexpensively and if that's, and if people have the, a taste for doing that. Um, so my only thought about your motion, Brad, the reason I bring this all up about your motion is that I like the idea of earmarking that for a capital project and I don't even mind earmarking it for a capital improved project at the, um, town garage, but I'd hate to do improvements with it if we're then later going to actually be replacing the building. I just think we have some decisions to make.
Yeah, well, it, it doesn't necessarily, as long as it goes toward the town garage in some way.
Okay.
Whether it's a new building or improvements, but I think the die is pretty well cast that it's going to be improvements and not a new building.
Might be. I mean, I know that that last time we all talked about it, that's where, where people fell, but I did wanna share what, you know, what, what Dan's perspective, you know, on it was. I asked him about improvements, he doesn't, he thinks that's just a waste of money to put money into that building. Um, I don't, you know, I don't pretend to understand construction issues, but, um, that's...
Yeah, well, I don't wanna get into that whole thing or we could be here all night. I just wanna
I agree.
make sure that the money winds up in the right account.
So, so your motion is for the capital project of the town, you're not, with that motion, you're not requiring it to be improvements and not a new building? You're still open to what that could be, is that correct?
Something to do with the town garage.
Okay.
Not a capital project for the town, which could be a guardrail or this or that.
Right.
It's go toward the town garage.
But, but, um, but a capital project with the town garage, not just, um, not fuel for the, you know, oil tank or, I don't know, they don't have
Right, right.
So your mo-
But we have insurance violations there that, you know, we're gonna get slapped on because they've been out there now for over two years and they need to be addressed.
Well, we need to make some decisions, it's true. So, um, and maybe what we wanna do is put that on a next agenda to be revisiting that, um, discussion and, and give people a, you know, a month to think about it and weigh in and, and maybe we bring that up next time. Is that what, would people have stomach to do that?
I think we was, we talked about that once before about building a new town garage and most, all the people, they didn't wanna go for a new town garage because they didn't want their taxes to keep going up because they want, it's pretty good this year.
Yep. They did.
I mean...
A lot of people are complaining about that.
Most people are not gonna pay the taxes if we keep putting up new and keep spending big money.
Yeah.
Right, that's why I said fix up what we have.
All right.
That's what I, uh...
If that's where we, or that's fine.
We fixed up the town office and look what we got, we got a nice place here, Neil.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, I agree, I agree, we should take that money then and put it in a way to, uh, improvements or, you know, to the town garage, new one is probably out right now, that's way down the future, but just have it appropriated so that money stays in towards a, however you wanna word it, uh, towards whatever we have to do with the town garage that we got now. I all agree with that.
I think that's a good idea because, boy, we put a lot of money in, uh, like the Parker Bridge and all them, cost us a lot of money.
Yeah.
Steve, you have any thoughts on this?
I think that fixing it so we can get up the road is good.
So Brad, would you like to just clarify your motion?
I would say that the money, the proceeds from the sale of the town hall be earmarked for improvements to the town garage.
Okay, and that's, um, that's actually exactly what you said the first time. I think we understand what that is now, so we had a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? All right, so we'll do the roll call vote, Paul.
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes, okay. Um, that money is earmarked. Um, I will make sure that we tell Doug, um, so that it can be reflected in the budget that way and the, you know, as in income. Um... Uh... I guess we come to the point of public comment, I'm not sure we have any public with us anymore. We're down to eight people, which is really seven, which would be us five, Chris and Bob, so, um, I don't think we have public, am I right? Is there any public out there? Hello, hello?
Quick question, um, did you sort of morph potential grant opportunities on the tail end of the road updates? Is that included?
Uh, we had it as a second, separate item on the agenda, but yeah, that, that is where I was talking about it with those potential, that, that's what I was talking about, Green Hill Road.
Okay.
Yeah, and the potential for the big, big box culvert or bridge on Green Hill Road, um, that FEMA might pay for, the design. Um, I had one other thing maybe under other business and other people might have something under other business. Um, but it occurred to me, and I wish Shelley was still here, but I, it didn't occur to me in time, um, but it did occur to me that, um, with the planning commission not working, um, meeting again until January, um, that, you know, I just sort of wanted to remind us that, that Bob, who is, his assignment is that he's an appointee of ours who is the, who is to implement, um, the town plan. Um, and, uh, um, and I guess I just wanted to remind us that we can still work with Bob and if there's things that should be worked on or implemented between now and January, um, we can still work with him and he can still reach out to the planning commission folks to get them involved on a one-on-one basis as need be, so. And does anybody have any other business?
No, I don't. I'm fine.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Steve's made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Doug and Paul raised the second it, all right. Um, I think we'll just say all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I write it down as a roll call, yeah, roll call, aye, 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 aye. Nobody's saying no, correct? All right.
Correct, right.
All right, well, thank you all and, uh, have a good evening.
Okay.
Thank you. Good meeting.
Stay safe.
Chris, did you want me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's Skip's last name?
Goodell, um, G, I can actually spell it for you in a minute, uh...
G-O-L-E, E-L-L.
There you go.
Okay, and then on the, um, the trucks, I got Summer Encore and Davenport.
Oh, um, so let's see, it's, um, Kevin Ruane. So he, yeah, Kevin was running all summer is what he said, so it's, it's Ruane, R-U-A-N-E. Dan Allard, A-L-L-A-R-D.
Okay.
Uh, Lonnie Corey, what, Corey, which one is that, Paul?
Leon.
Leon. Leon, I couldn't read my own writing. Davenport is the other one. And then the town, and then the town of Tenmouth.
Okay.
Every time I've seen, every time I've seen Leon and Davenport driving, I never seen them driving fast.
You seen them coming down or going up?
Both ways.
Okay. Well, if we had a sheriff there for a period of time, we would know because the sheriff won't stop them if they're not speeding, so...
No, they, they, they traveled just, I mean, they, they go by here both ways and they're not speeding.
Yeah. Um...
Like I said, there's only a couple of them and it may even be like Ruane, he may only have one driver that's the culprit.
Yeah.
Right.
And also, if we put it out to them, you know, there's one person that's involved and he's gonna make it bad for the company, you know, uh, something they're gonna have to deal with. So I think the best way is, like I said, without just hearing, wow, it's red truck, it went by. Find out who it is, go to them, talk to them and just tell them, you know, you don't obey the speed limit and be careful going down through there, you're gonna be booted off the road and you're gonna have to take alternative routes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's the thing to do, I think that, that was a good, good, good suggestion. All right, anything else you need, Chris? Did you get, um, everybody, did you get Nicole's name? Nicole Campbell?
Nicole Campbell, I got, yeah.
Okay, and that and Skip and Shelley. Um, yeah. All right. Perfect. All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, you're welcome.
Good night.